Okay, we will hear a motion to get off the agenda.
I saw.
Second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. That's the, oh, our minutes. All right, here, we will hear a motion on the consent agenda.
I will approve the consent agenda as presented.
Um, Tyler?
I'll second that.
Um, Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, go, guest speaker?
I'm abstaining there, because I wasn't at the meeting.
Oh. What part in your box?
No, it wasn't at the meeting.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm abstaining from July 20th.
Oh.
Right.
You didn't have one in?
I, I had my agenda when I came in here for my box, but I don't know if Bob grabbed it when he took off.
Oh.
I have that in the agenda, so.
Oh. I thought it had.
I had it out of my box and had to be in front of me to obfuscate the agenda that I own, so, uh, maybe I...
There you go.
Thank you very much. I'm in business with people like...
Do you want it to my phone, to my, uh, computer, or to my killer?
All right, on the guest speaker communication information from Wyndham, the Lake County Local Public Coordinating Council minutes. Anybody read through those I did earlier?
And then there was an agenda, or should be an agenda, if not, for August 10th. If anybody wants to go, it's at 11:30 at Memorial Hall, lunch will be provided.
When?
On Thursday, I think, August 10th.
Uh-huh.
At 11:30.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Can we have any?
That's actually why I'm here, since I'm not on the agenda. Um, so K R B is going to have their second annual color run on September 9th at 5 o'clock. And, um, I have outhouses and I have insurance and I talked to Chief Grindle and I have his blessings. And so we just kind of thought you guys might want to be on the same page, so.
September 9th, what time?
Uh, 5 o'clock, so sign up, we'll be at 4 at the station and then it'll start at 5 and it's going to be the exact same route as last year. And end at the Elks and no changes at all, actually, so.
Did we have road closures or no?
No, no, no road closures.
That's what we do here.
It has, so we did not prepare, so.
Years of course.
So I don't know if you guys need anything from me, I just thought I should come and mention it and...
No, tell me the color run.
Yeah, the color fun run that we did last year, so it's, um, where you do a 5K and chalk and walking and running. And then it ends at the Elks where they put on a spaghetti feed and an open mic night afterwards. So it's kind of K R B and Elks together.
I think that we had a request for the color run where they were going to go, no, that's for the eclipse, is that for the eclipse, another one?
Not for K R B.
The chalk thing?
Yeah, it's not for K R B, I think you're talking about for the 4H thing, for the eclipse, yeah.
I remember when you did it last year, Marcy, I was concerned about the chalk being on the street.
Right.
And much, but it, it went away bad.
Yeah, it washes off quick. And actually, Tru Valley has a better product, product, product this year that is completely safe for everything and washes off, yeah, so. And I can buy it local, so see?
Damage be right up front of that.
Exactly, so, but I didn't know, um, once you Grindle and I talked to the staff, I should bring it to you guys and if you have any questions or...
Last year you were happy with the success of it or?
Yeah, everything turned out great, we have a sidewalk in, we took all safety precautions and we're going to do it the exact same way.
Sounds good.
And the police were helpful and drove around and everything went really well. It was lots of fun.
Will you get cross-country kids in on this?
Hopefully, hopefully, yeah, we didn't have a lot last year, but because it's, well, you know, it's right after fair and yeah, so. And I, I haven't started advertising it or anything because I wanted to come here today first, so. But I'd like to start tomorrow, so we'll see if we can get cross-country involved, so.
Well, I think you'd have, you know, some kids there because of the interest that, that, uh, they did that run for...
For Noni, and that we were going to give the proceeds from this one.
People that have fun doing that, that will like to do this.
Right, we were going to do, since we had done the first one, we were going to do it for Noni this year, but since they did it, we're going to do it, we're going to get part of the money back to, uh, trash cancer, which a lot of Lakeview doesn't know anything about yet, but, um, Debbie Lidle's working on it where Tom's going to do his derby car with a pink trash can and earn some money for the traveling cancer camp, uh, campaign through the hospital. And so that's what we're going to donate the proceeds for, part of this course.
Oh, that's really nice.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, um, do you have any other?
That sounds like a good project.
We, thanks.
Go for it.
All right.
Yeah. Sounds like funny.
What's that say? Thank you. Thanks for us. All right, thank you, bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, now welcome down to department reports, Scott?
Well, 9-1 is really busy. Um, we're working on our new phone system, um, we just started the paperwork. It's $247,000 for our telephone system, uh, through CenturyLink. Tech has been trained, um, hopefully, more likely to be either here or Elks season when they decide to do it. But we're basically the last, uh, D S A P to get our telephone upgrade. I was working on, oh, we, uh, when we had the fires, we had, uh, I think Tuesday was our busiest day ever. We had 109 cats, uh, from the fires up north and south and our people were just wiped out by the time their shift was done. Because we just were inundated with, um, phone calls.
But you handled it.
We got through it and we had several medicals, but a lot of fires everywhere. So that went well. And I have one, Rebecca is off at the academy and she'll be graduating, I think, this Friday. Can't get home, but...
Yeah, no car.
No car, but, uh, anyway, so car broke down.
So when the, didn't start out here?
Really?
Uh-huh. Now we'll start.
So I gave her your cellphone and I told her how to make it work.
Okay. We jacked it up and then let it down and it started.
You're like, you jacked it up?
Yep, we put a jack under it.
And you just dropped it?
Well, we, our intention was to jack it up and I've been told that if it's the electric fuel pump, you can take a rubber hammer and smack the bottom of the gas tank and it will break something loose and it will fire up. So I wasn't here when they did it, but they just jacked it up. And as soon as they got it up, he just got in there and hit the starter and it started right up. So I, I don't know if the two are related, but that's all we did. And we tried several times the day before and would not even try to fire.
So what do we call West Wathen, having to jack it up and then it's gonna start?
Cause we did check it before we sent it.
Is it in Salem?
It's at the academy.
I have to go to Salem next week.
Maybe you can bring it home.
I could take a trailer.
Might have to.
Might have to. All right, I'm sure how we're going to get Rebecca home.
Pump it.
So the key is for her to get the jack out. Jack the back up or the front up?
We, we jacked the back up.
Well, she's a farm girl, I'm sure she can probably figure.
Get mallet?
You just jacked it up and just dropped it.
We just jacked it up.
You got any more stuff?
Sorry.
Have this one fire, Dennis?
I have nothing more.
Okay?
More fires.
Well, Travis, not here.
There's a nice letter in the paper complimenting all the fire departments that helped, uh, stop the fire from coming over the hill, as they say.
We got some good help from the Morgan too, so they helped us out a little bit.
Good work.
You know, that's what I like about our community, we need help, it, it shows up. Uh, Public Works, Jeff?
Well, I wanted to apologize for my handwriting on that, I was thinking that was going to get rewritten before it got written, but, uh, I think it was somewhat, you can probably read it, you're used to reading kids' writing.
I used to read yours and then that has to be...
It's the grammar.
The punctuation, first rate. But in there, I, I mentioned that we're using a lot of water and we're producing just about 85% of what we're capable of. So, you know, that's a little bit too close for comfort. So I want to put on the front burner, doing something with our new well that we have down there that we had drilled about seven years ago and they never ran the drop of water out of it since. We, Roberta and I have been talking about, we want to get a hydrologist down here to make a, you know, the right call on it and we're going to spend some money on it, but, you know, there's no going back now. The money has already been spent on it, the hole is in the ground, we just have to figure out the proper way to use it, you know. It's going to be much less capacity than what it was designed at, but, you know, any little bit would help right now.
Are we using that much more water or is it just that the wells aren't producing as much?
Well, the, the spring is starting to drop off and we've always been really close to the, our capabilities this time of year. But I don't know, I think it worries me a little bit more than it used to on, maybe he'd worry about it all night too, but...
Have we ever done rationing or watering on?
Never have, ever have to. Nope. And we've had breakdowns in the middle of summer and we've managed to get pumps rebuilt, motors rebuilt, uh...
I don't know why people are using so much water, I've been walking in the morning, there's a whole lot of lots, nobody's watering.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're, the prison uses a lot of water, it really does.
I can imagine.
Lens cake out at the cemetery on City now?
They are on City, yeah.
There's a lot of drinking.
They use a ton of water, yeah. But, you know, I'm, I'm not saying I want to sell less water, I'm just saying we need to get prepared for it in case something does pop up and...
Be able to...
That's the most, that's the most likely.
They will supply them.
I don't want to turn anybody...
So you are working, you and Roberta are working on that?
We are, yeah.
Yeah.
I got a lead today that the, uh, the water master here in the county knows a lot of hydrologists naturally and he is somewhat of a hydrologist himself and, and I was told that he could send us the right direction for, to hire someone to come down.
I think it will work, that's a lot that spends in the storm, it's not...
And it always takes more to make sure it works, but, that we've got to make it worthwhile to spend that money in the first place, I guess. Are we any further with getting the Utley well where it's producing before we lose that connection? We talked a little bit about that.
The geothermal?
Yeah.
Oh, they put a new pump in?
No, at, at DOC, the new pump, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're, I don't, I don't call that the Utley well, I call the Utley well the one over at the Oregon Desert Farm, but, yeah.
But there, we, when we talked before, there's one where if we don't start to use that, then we use the, we lose the right to do that.
And just for your information, I did talk to Darrell and Jeff, oh, Jeff, um, our attorney this, this week. And, uh, he was also, Darrell was going to bring in a hydraulic, or a, a well driller so that we would start getting that one going and then try to make some type of connection into the DOC, you know, so.
I mean, if we need backup, that's, that's our backup.
Yeah, so they are, we have to start to work on that, too.
Okay, Darrell's not here, Roberta?
Uh, I handed out a couple things that are in front of you, um, one of them had to do, uh, Governor Brown had, uh, signed some money, some different economic development pieces where Red Rock will receive $75,000 from her department or, you know, through the program there. So that's something we could use that, possibly, that will help Red Rock come in. And then, um, the other article or thing I handed out was just from the, it's the plan that still they put together and what they've been doing and what they're at, so just informational items. And then, um, that's, yeah.
Considering personally, you said you were going for surgery on the 24th, do you have any idea how long that'll take you out of?
I'll probably be back in a minute.
When?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty, really?
Yeah, well, I, we cover really fast, I, I'll be out, um, on the 18th, I have to go to Florida for tests and stuff. And then I thought I would just, I had planned to take a couple days off during that weekend, so I was hoping to take that off and then have the surgery on Thursday, we could on Friday, Saturday, and drive back slowly someday, so. And hopefully start, he said I could work, um, by duty, well, I do work by duty, so it's kind of like, and I asked him about the drive and the long drive and he said just get out a lot, like a lot, a lot for that, so I'm taking, I pick up, I think it'll be easier to get, you know, the car, not clutching stuff. So hopefully, there we can go, well, I'll start back in pieces on Monday, but I'm an optimist, that's you.
Sounds good.
But they're just going to go in and do some cleaning and remove the bulge and stuff, it's all over, like a scotching, so. And they've done that, so, we may, can't look worse than it does now, so.
Yeah, I noticed that you brought up a deal here, possibly closing town hall at 1 on Fridays?
Right, that was a question because we're short staffed, or maybe even, I don't know, the girls, you know, on Fridays, there's very little traffic. And so that was one of the things that I had been asked to bring forward, because the guys get off at 11:30. So they were thinking about shifting hours, maybe during the same hours, for 7:30 to 4:30, the same hours, because we have to call you guys out or whatever, but, um, the other thing that I think we would need to do is have a good phone system that would say, if you have a water problem or something, please call dispatch, you know, or something. We don't have that link right now, so the only way they can really know is have some of the good phones. So it was just a discussion I had and they wanted me to bring up and I just raised it up.
So from 7:30, 4:30, four days a week and then 1 o'clock on Fridays?
On Fridays or something, yeah.
7:30 to 4:30 or?
Seven, well, probably go 8:5 or whatever and then on Friday just close up at 1 or something, but...
So they wouldn't be making up those four hours?
So, but they would have to come in early. I don't know, I've got to pencil that out, it was just a discussion, I said I would put it on here, because I still, I'm old school.
So I noticed that you mentioned the annexation request, so how, where's that?
Hopefully, I'm going to be taking that over to the commissioners, hopefully tomorrow. That would be with an annexation request for Cadenus Road, which they are, are aware of. But we're just, that we've already discussed with the commissioners, Roberta Avenue, which would be South, um, Roberta Avenue. And also, um, S Street, so I've got it.
A letter from S.
And the description is, is in the South, yes. Because we have utilities in all, in Roberta and X, right, home?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, it's one of those, it just kind of puts everything together. We talked about doing the Red Rock annexation piece itself, but until they own the property, so, but I talked to them. And then, yeah.
Refund, remind me what that process, once we get their approval?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then what, do we have to have public hearings, do we go from that?
Yeah, we have to have all that, just go through the state, and Darwin, you're more familiar with that, you know, that type of thing than I am, probably, but... Public hearings, I'm sure.
Accessions myself, but...
We have to send notifications?
Yes.
And ask for feedback and legal hearings?
Legal counsel's on it.
Yeah.
He'll bring all this information.
Yes, yeah, he will. But I'm starting the first one with the letters of the commissioners.
So, is there timeline, the November taxation time, or?
I don't think that's going about it like that, is that what you're going to know?
No, I would, just for, for sending out tax.
Yeah, it probably, at least November, first of December. And the other one that we're working on too is the, making sure we have the ordinance and everything ready for the marijuana to go on ballot this next year. Who's know we're working on that right now?
That's regarding the tax?
Yeah, the tab. And so we, we're drafting an ordinance and just making sure that everything's ready. And then I'm also working on, um, I've got a couple draft water ordinances, as we spoke about the last meeting. And I have Jeff and I sit down and, you know, had a go through some of that. There's, ours are pretty outdated and we even need to update it, so we get on that. I have some samples, so six and a half. Of course, we've been short staffed, so it's kind of, kind of crazy around here. Yeah, Amy was gone last week on vacation, Don was out sickly, so hopefully Don will be here at the end of the week or the first of the week.
She's helping, so.
Yeah, it's pretty quick though, after that surgery, so I don't want, I'd rather her not push it and come back than have to be gone again, so, yeah.
Do you have anything on your own business?
Just for information only, it's just the same, um, with the lodging tax, that we're working on that ordinance and stuff. And, um, I'm continuing to work on that and I thought, because I don't know all the business owners, if they're all local or not local, but I thought sending them a certified letter of, just explaining what we're going to be doing would be probably a good first step. And that's jacked up that also, so I'll get those out this week, just to kind of explain what we're going to be doing.
Yeah, that's a good idea, so.
Because if absentee owners...
Whoever's managing it can let the person...
That's kind of what I thought, we would have a record that, yes, we could notify them, so.
Yeah.
Oh, and then one more thing on our business that we talked about is, um, uh, when we were discussing the, um, ATEs and down the streets, I did talk to Rob Thornton, it was yesterday or just Monday, I'm not sure, we stayed together, but I do have the name of the gentleman in Bend that can come down and talk and it may be the week of the 20th, we would maybe have to have a special little session with him to explain what they did in Bend. So I said, I thought we could probably get, uh, you know, things together.
Would we typically ask Forest Service personnel to be here for that?
I think we're nerdy.
I, I think it would be a good idea, I was at a meeting, um, one of the, so I would, I would report for our, um, updates. The Chamber has, um, gotten a deal and let me tell you, it's a significant deal for the Chamber. The people who are staffing the, uh, Welcome Center now, which we're, the Chamber's paid by the state, I think, Travel Oregon or somewhere similar to that, to maintain the Welcome Center. And so we have in the past always had to use that pretty much for salary. But now the Forest Service has taken that on, we have a Forest Service person whose schedule has been rearranged, so she gets like Monday and Tuesday off and she's staffing the Welcome Center. So that gives us some, we've been needing maps, we've been needing a lot of things like that to back up some of the things we do and we can use some of that money toward that. But when we went to a meeting with the Forest Service, they started talking about the ATEs and the road use and stuff like that. I told them that we were looking at the, you know, road access and crossings. And so I think that they would come and bring their concerns as well as getting the information this, uh, person has to bring to us. So I think it would be, and I don't know, BLM wasn't, wasn't at this meeting, but probably those agencies should be informed about this.
All right, we'll make sure. Sure.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. We've all noticed everybody, they're flushing hydrants. You got one more day of that?
Yeah, it's only going to be part of the day, we'll, we'll be done before noon tomorrow, so.
What time are you starting?
Seven.
I filled my coffee pot.
We're, we're out of here, David, it should, it should get just continuously better here by now, so.
Must convince my neighbor that I never noticed him.
Yeah.
I did, I definitely did.
Well, they filled the kiddie pool, it was pretty embarrassing. They filled it right after we flushed right beside him and man, it was bad.
That's where, that's what cleared my, I didn't have to worry about coming to my house.
Yeah, they got it, that's for sure.
The next time you do this, what you'll have to do, run the store and get a gallon of water and run it down there and put it on her doorstep.
Yeah, I'll just take her.
You won't have to miss it.
I, I filled my coffee pot before it was dead, and that's...
I thought everybody did that anyway.
Okay, uh, the South Central Regional Exclusions Advisory Committee, agenda and minutes?
Right.
They're in there.
Yeah, and we'll be meeting on Friday, um, in Malin.
Malin Friday?
So if anybody wants to go.
There's not any questions about that, was, were you on that committee before, who was on that committee? Because I see that you're on it, but no, no councilor?
I'd like to have somebody on.
South Central Oregon Economic Development, I served on it and, and what, I served for many years on it and Ray being on it as an executive director, uh, which is what you assumed, I guess, for, kind of, we felt, well, for reality and it just kind of fulfilled, you know, the, the situation. I, you know, I, I enjoyed being on it, I just felt that it was kind of a overkill with, with two points, because the meetings are not here all the time.
I don't, I, I don't think it would be a bad thing just from being at the terminal, because there's a lot of time here, maybe I couldn't go, you could go, or vice versa, um...
Being involved in the economic development, I always had an interest in it, but like I said, this, it's a big, big debate, so.
Oftentimes I have three commissioners that go.
Yeah, that's what I noticed.
I, I think, I don't think it would be a bad thing at all to have them in the, at the council, or, I, I read a...
And obviously Paisley doesn't have a, you know, type of staff like this, but, you know, their mayor goes. I just was curious about that, when I saw the agenda again, I think you should probably just send somebody from the council.
And oftentimes there are...
You can ride together or something, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that bad of a deal, I mean, which would cost a whole lot more in time and anything like that. Sometimes they do need here, so.
Because I think, well, to rotate, the plan that they're here, or, this is the first time on Malin, but I thought that would be a good one to go to. Is it every month or is it every, it's not, no, it's every.
It's every month.
I'm not used to.
They have the, the quarter executive.
Yeah, the executive ones are the first Friday of the month and then let's go out or let's go after the second of the month, so.
I've been asked by the commissioner ten a couple times, you know, on and off, this is plenty of, um, yeah, just about.
So then you want to?
Well, Mayor can think about that, if you want to make that a sign of...
A point, but, yeah.
You want, you want to go?
No, I'm not saying I want to go, I can't go this, to this meeting, since I've got my cell surgery, but, uh, you know, it'd be something I'd consider, right, for sure.
But can they wipe us interest?
Well, the thing is, I'd probably...
Want them to go there because?
Because there's, there's, things overlap with planning, you know, some of those.
And maybe you guys could co-do it, you know?
Yeah, I think a counselor should go with you and I think if it's good, then somebody on the council knows for sure.
You can't make it this, right?
Yeah, I could, I can't make it this far. No, I'm not.
You're going to have fun.
So could you make it this far?
I need to do some checking back at the station. I'm not, oh, yeah, much of a...
So you're going to be out how long, darling?
Oh, I don't know, I, they say I should be fine back there, probably, so.
I don't know, Sandy, you've had surgery, like, let's stay healthy.
I hope you.
Yeah.
We've got.
Okay. Preparing for the solar heat cliff, there's an article in here, I'd like to add to that. At the mayor's convention, this is one of the things that they stressed with emergency management. This Lakeview in 395, one of the main corridors coming up, that, uh, told us to, uh, check our, have our grocery stores, all of our restaurants, our gas stations, even motels, that, uh, you're going to see an increase in traffic.
There's places in Bend that it's already overrun.
Oh, they're, um...
I guess their motel prices took quite a...
Yeah, and I heard that's being investigated.
Yeah.
But, um, the Canita Resort on the Madras, Japan has rented all 400 rooms up there, they did that year in advance.
And there's forty thousand people expected in Madras.
Yeah, Madras has also brought in a, uh, a portable controls tower for aircraft, that Redman has mainly taken in commercial and air painters, that the small aircraft, they're trying to divert them elsewhere, that the first report, when I was up there, was they're expecting four hundred thousand, now it's been moved to one point six million, up in the shoots, can we?
I'm kind of glad we're not in the path of totality.
Right. Didn't you go talk to?
It's just unreal.
Didn't you go talk to, you went and talked to some businesses?
I did, and I talked to the grocery stores, and went down to Staub's, talked to them, they were aware of it, they've already got a surplus tank ready to go, that they can fill up their tank, or trucks, or whatever, and add to the stations.
I think there are some businesses who are going to be stay healthy twenty-four hours, that they've just agreed that.
Wow, really?
Yeah, okay.
But it's something we're aware of, and that's what, you know, we talked about.
Interesting to see what kind of ability we really get.
Who has, we have to wear the glasses, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Chamber had them, but they ran out.
Oh, great sound.
So I don't know if they were, if they, I know they were going to order more, so I'm sure that they'll get them back in, but.
I just gave a little shoebox, a little hole. That's what they said, that's what we did when we were kids.
Yeah, well, one of the, um, Ogle girls is blind because of that.
No, Martha.
Yeah. You know, I have three welding helmets.
And you don't need to be looking at it at all with your bad eye.
No, it's in.
All right, we'll go, mayor council updates, anybody have anything?
Well, I gave you my information about the Chamber and how things are going there, um, uh, I, the report that we had on, what was it, Thursday or Wednesday, they turned over fifteen hundred to the, uh, Police Department for their helmets, based on the tip of cop and the, the activities around that day, they just said it wasn't as well attended as they had really hoped, but they thought, you know, maybe first year and we get going on it, maybe it'll be better in coming up, but thought that was really pretty exciting, that, that, that's probably enough to provide, buy helmets for a year or two, so that's, that's encouraging for our kids. I did a little, uh, walk around the park, which I should have done much earlier, across the street, that is pathetic.
Yeah.
And pathetic's the nicest word I can think of.
It's getting such heavy use.
Well, and it's not just that, it's not clean. If, if you checked out the gutters around the thing, oh, it's nasty. First of all, we're growing crops in those gutters, and where there aren't crops growing, there's all kinds of twigs and leaves and debris, so that has never been cleaned out, I don't know if the Swims, people should have done it, and we just never hit that blocks with them, or, but it needs definitely some cleaning, and the, the restrooms are nasty.
He's supposed to be cleaning those every day.
At the very least, well, it's, it's, it's more art, the floors need to be painted, they're so worn and they're, they're nasty, and, and we just need to do some painting and some cleaning and, I don't know if we can.
No, we, we completely painted them, not this summer, but last summer, the inside now, but, yeah.
But the, anyway, the floor, and I just went to girls, and I'm assuming, and this is okay, probably not fair, I'm assuming the guys, it's worse. The, uh, the, and the pool, I think probably Indians painting and, and, um, uh.
I could get rid of that little pool, that's what I would like.
Which one?
The one down at the cake bar.
You don't want it at all.
It's so hard to, to do anything with, and.
Well, it gets a lot of use, I'm telling you, it gets a tremendous amount of use.
I think it's really great, because.
It maybe.
Yeah, it doesn't cost anything.
They don't want to, you don't want to pay them going to the big pool, and I like, so that's fun.
Pop-up sprinklers.
Oh, I do too. Oh, that was, I find kids have a lot of fun with that.
Yeah, there's new technologies that we can look into, probably.
Yeah, I think so too.
Water activity.
Kind of a water, little, that sprinkler thing is great, yeah.
But, uh, I think we've kind of ignored it to the point where now we've got to do some, and the, the lawn is this.
Yeah, that lawn has taken a beating.
Oh.
Yeah, I think the, the whole park needs a, a revamping.
We just need to kind of flower up and put sodding or something.
Utilize it in different ways.
And the chips, I, I'm not sure how long those chips have been in there, but I think probably a generation or so of kids have peed in them.
Oh, no.
Well, you don't think they do?
I never thought about it.
In the what?
In the chips around the equipment.
Playground. They're well below.
Those just go away, and we, we've added, you know, we've added fifteen yard, uh, chips to that just this year.
Is that right? You can't tell it at all, yeah. Didn't you put some in this? That's just what he said, because you can't tell it at all.
Two heap and dump truck loads in there this year.
You still want to shovel them out of the garden?
I think, uh, I was almost to the point of thinking, you know, if we get some money from marijuana, we ought to earmark it for some projects like this, that we can go in and do some maintenance work on these things.
There's, there's just zero money in the parks.
Yeah, I, yeah, exactly.
But that's something, that lodging tax.
Lodging tax could certainly be.
The lodging tax could definitely.
Your parks accommodate.
Well, that's a good.
It'd be good.
But I, that's what I thought, I thought there's some money coming in from a couple of different sources, and maybe we could, you know, and if we put that out before that, um, election, that might be a bonus for our side, so we're going to reinvest the money locally in these ways.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's my soap opera, I'm done.
Attended the CHIP BU, we did a community assessment, um, which was, was real good, to kind of take a, you know, survey of those who attended, and just kind of see what, what we think are our needs. I'm sure the CHIP program will, you know, give a further report of that here shortly after, but, um, Pam Luskoen, um, has contacted me about joining the Regional Housing Committee that they have, so I'll be doing that here shortly, attending the meeting next Thursday on that. It's not the Housing Authority that, uh, I mean, Climate Housing Authority that, that represents our committee, but, uh, that would get me at least in the door to working on it, I'm sure trying to get on that as well, but, um, certainly busy.
Penny?
I have nothing.
Better.
Well, I have, um, I attended the Jessica Ellis Tribune up there, and the sign is, if you're coming down Quartz Mountain, and you come around the corner, the sign should be right there. It'd be one, I think there's two, one on that side, one on the other side, and there's about sixty people there, um, talking with Charlie a little bit, Charlie Pike, um, they're gonna make, uh, make it possible, they're looking at making it a Purple Heart County, and take the town, and he's going to be here at the next council meeting, but, uh, maybe designate three parking spots, you know, somewhere around town for Purple Heart and veteran, disabled veterans to park, because he says they do use a lot of them around the courthouse there and stuff, and, uh, that kind of thing. So he's going to bring that up at the next council meeting, he said he'd be there, but today he had to go up Lee Dale, and that's basically all I have.
I could ask him anything.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I think that's what I agree, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a heat pump, and when I checked with Sam and, and Joe, they were going to redo our whole furnace system, which was about eight to ten thousand dollars, and so I, that's a lot of money. And I asked them if that would, something like that would work in there, and actually Sam said, you think it'll buy yourself one, yeah, but they were very impressed that that's what we want, because it will take away this building, we'll still have the heater that'll work, and so, and all that was.
This is a heat and a cooling system?
Yeah, so, but then we can also turn on the regular heater, not the cooler, but up on top, but.
And that costs?
A half a water bill. Probably three to four, I have a bill, yeah, but, I'm thinking six. He spent a day and a half to put that in, finished up this morning, but, and we can save a little bit of money, but I thought it might be the idea, so.
He put those in, down there Fremont, every one of the computer rooms, to keep the computer and stuff cool, they work pretty well, they put one in the saw box, um, I tried to get him to put one in my box out there, but still haven't done that, because I was out there every week.
But at least maybe it helps, it's helping to not get some of the, so. Oh, it's nice in here.
Who installed it for you?
Joe, what's his name?
Start's Electric.
Start's.
Joe McIntosh.
Yeah.
Hopefully it'll keep us going.
You ordered it through them?
That what?
You ordered it through them?
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, we will adjourn the meeting at four forty-six.